Thank you so much, everyone, for coming. We're going to get started. Please find a space to stand where you can. We're so glad that all of you are here tonight. Thank you so much for coming out, especially on such short notice. We really appreciate you being here. Welcome. My name is Danielle Del Sol. I'm the Executive Director of the Preservation Resource Center of New Orleans. Welcome to our headquarters. We're so grateful to have you here. We're grateful to have Councilman Freddie King here with us tonight so that we can have dialogue. Thank you so much, Councilman, for being here with us tonight. Our evening is going to be moderated by the PRC Board Vice President, Alston Taylor, who is also the President and CEO of St. Augustine High School. Alston, thank you so much for being here tonight, and take it away.
Something told me to bring my St. Augustine fundraiser can tonight. But I didn't do it. Welcome, everyone. Let's give another round of applause for believing in our city. I first want to acknowledge current President Charlie Erstad, who unfortunately was not able to be with us today. My remarks is his remarks as we work on one accord together for the betterment of PRC and our city. PRC was founded 49 years ago with the purpose of preserving and keeping historic culture in neighborhoods in the city of New Orleans safe, protected, sustained, and to be able to represent a city that we all love. Tonight, I would like to make acknowledgements of Vucrey Commission Foundation, Vucrey Property Owners and Residence Associates, French Quarter Citizens, Historic BK Houses and Gardens, Louisiana State Museum Foundation, Louisiana Landmark Society, Herman Grimmer and Gallia Historic Houses. Tonight, we are discussing the French Quarter. And as we discuss the French Quarter, I want to acknowledge the fact that it is a beautiful sight and see so many people come out because of a crown jewel of our city. We all know what took place just a week ago with a piece of legislation that came out, and due to it, we all responded. And so now that we're here, I want to thank Councilmember Freddie King III for not only being here today, because he's come in the past to PRC and graced us with his presence, but to take the time to share what is to come from this opportunity and with this amazing audience and why we are here and what we are here for. I also want to focus on this agenda item that we have today. This agenda item is only one agenda item. What I mean by that is, let's keep this to the French Quarter. I know when we have our political appointees in the room, we tend to want to ask them everything about our city. Tonight is not about everything. Tonight is about the French Quarter and preserving, sustaining, and how, if there is change, how do we move forward collectively? Okay? There will be a Q and A. In the Q and A, it will be appointed from Danielle and myself for someone to ask a question. We ask that you keep it short, and we ask that you keep it to what we're here for today. If the question that come to us is outside of the realm of what we're discussing today, respectfully, it will be dismissed. Okay? All right. Without further fail, I would like to introduce Attorney Sonny Shields, former two-time PRC President, to discuss the Vucrey Commission and its history. Thank you, guys, and thank you for answering the call for such a crown jewel of the city of New Orleans. Thank you.
Thank you, Alston. What a turnout. In just a matter of days, it has been, and look at this white hair, I can tell you, it's been decades since we've had an issue like this, and it came together like that. Look at this crowd. We love New Orleans. We absolutely love New Orleans. That's why we're here, and we love the heart of New Orleans, which is the Vucrey. But we're not the first ones. I mean, this thing has been going on so long, looking around, I don't think there's anybody in this audience that was alive when this movement started. This movement started in 1925, when the Commission Council, which it was at that time, not the City Council, created the Vucrey Commission. But it didn't have any power then. It was only advisory, and in fact, it didn't last very long. It only lasted five years. But then, by virtue of Ms. Worline and many others pushing the legislature in 1936, an amendment was passed, a statewide amendment to the Constitution. And that statewide amendment gave the Commission Council the authority to create the Vucrey Commission, but with teeth this time. And the Commission Council did that, and it's important that it did that because in one or two minutes, they're going to talk about a 1964 case where that really meant something. So the Vucrey Commission was created, but let's look at, how many of you have read the amendment? In fact, it's hard to find the amendment, the 1936 amendment, but this is a piece of it. "The said Vucrey Commission shall have for its purpose the preservation of such buildings in the Vucrey section of the city of New Orleans, as in the opinion of said commission, shall be deemed to have architectural and historical value, and which buildings should be preserved for the benefit of the people of the city of New Orleans and the state of Louisiana. And to that end, the commission shall be given such powers and duties as the Commission Council of the city of New Orleans shall deem fit and necessary." Now, I'm reading that quote from a 1941 Supreme Court case. In fact, this is City of New Orleans versus Pergamint. The rehearing was denied on December 1, 1941, and everybody in this room knows history. What was to come in just a few days. But it's rare that a court says things that are so flowery and nice, as this court said. Listen to this. This is the Pergamint decision. "The purpose of this ordinance is not only to preserve the old buildings themselves, but to preserve the antiquity of the whole French and Spanish Quarter, the Tudon Song, so to speak." That's where that term came from, this Supreme Court case. "By defending this relic against iconoclasm or vandalism, preventing or prohibiting eyesores in such a locality is within the police power and within the scope of this municipal ordinance. The preservation of the Vucrey as it was originally is a benefit to the inhabitants of New Orleans generally, not only for its sentimental value of the showplace, but for its commercial value as well, because it attracts tourists and conventions to the city and is, in fact, justification for the slogan 'America's Most Interesting City.'" That was 1941, 82 years ago, and it's still going now. Tourism, as we all know, is our number-one business. Why in the world would we want to do something to defile the reason why people come here? Yes, I know, and I don't live in the Vucrey, but I love it. It's not the only place in town, but it is the heart of New Orleans, and that's why it has to be preserved, and that's why we are here. This V.C. Porra case, V.C. Porra has been doing the right thing for a long, long time. There's a 1964 case, which involved an amendment, an attempted amendment by the City Council in 1946, to cut off a little of the periphery of the French Quarter. Rampart Street on the Riverside, Decatur Street on the Riverside, those parking lots, and the Monteleone Hotel. So let's look what happened. It took until 1964 for this thing to get to the Louisiana Supreme Court. You know Rampart Street with all the newish buildings and parking lots to this day? That's a result of the 1946 ordinance. That's what happens when the City Council does something to defile the Vucrey Commission's power. The parking lots behind the Canal Place, same thing. The Monteleone Hotel, isn't that strange? It was carved out in this 1946 ordinance. Have you all ever looked up at the top of the Monteleone, at that funny thing up there? That's why it's there, is that ordinance. Point being, when something happens, I realize that the proposed ordinance was only a year, but man, can a lot happen in that year. And when it happens, it's there forever. This is 2023, Rampart Street, behind the Canal Place, and the beautiful thing on top of the Monteleone. That's how long it is. Preservationists, we get a bad name sometimes, but Councilman King, I want you to know that we are here to work with you, and let's use this as an opportunity. Look at how fast, how many, in all this. We don't like that ordinance, and we hope it'll be withdrawn. In fact, if you all have seen the City Attorney's opinion, it's unconstitutional, for the same reason that the 1964 case was held by Louisiana Supreme Court to call that commission, the City Council's action, wrong. But we are here to say, since we're all here, and since we're all interested, let's do something preservationists have been for for decades that I know about, and that is enforcement, to redouble our efforts to preserve what we have, why people come here, indeed, America's most interesting city.
Thank you, Sonny. That was so dapper, Mr. Shields. I'd now like to invite Councilman Freddie King III to the mic to discuss the ordinance, where things stand, and our way forward. Let's give him a round of applause. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out. I do see how important it is, how important VCC is, French Quarter is, to everyone, so thank you all for coming out. This means a lot. This says a lot. This speaks volumes. So I want to first say I do agree with Mr. Shields that the French Quarter is very important. It's the economic engine to the city of New Orleans. It's the economic engine to the state of Louisiana. It's the economic Okay. Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. So I was saying, I can't read it. I was saying that I do agree. I do agree, Mr. Shields, that the French Quarter is the economic engine of the city. It's the economic engine of the state, and I always say also it's the economic engine of the region. And I understand that. I want to keep it protected. I want to keep it sacred. So I want to first talk about the ordinance as it is currently written. So what you see here, scrolling on the screen, is the original ordinance. It is a work in progress. It is no way a finished product, and this will not be introduced on Thursday. It will be deferred to the Community Development Meeting in late, the last Monday in June, and this ordinance may, will very well be a completely, a different ordinance, because we are working with VCC, with Safety and Permits, to get to a path forward where everyone is comfortable with what we're doing. I don't want to change VCC's enforcement powers. I don't want to gut it. I don't want to diminish it. I don't want to dismantle VCC. I think they have a, not I think, it is proven that they have a vital role to the strength and the vitality of the French Quarter, and welcome. And I want to help them keep moving forward. I do understand that the ordinance gave a lot of people heartburn after reading it with a different set of eyes, and after talking to many people in this room, I know one right here is Mr. Sell. She gave me her honest feedback. Mr. Frank Perez gave me his honest feedback, and I'm not afraid to admit when things could have been done differently. I'm not afraid to admit that, hey, I was wrong. I have no ego. That's not who I am. So we are going to change this. We're going to work it, going to fine-tune it. I'm talking to the Law Department, and I want to thank Mr. Brian Block, who I'll get to in a second. I want to thank Ms. Renee. Thank you, and Mr. Lance, and I know that we also talked to Safety and Permits. I don't see anybody from that organization here. They are, I don't want to leave you out. And I learned a lot from those conversations. One thing that I learned is, much like the VCC, much like the City Council, everything French Quarter-related falls at the feet of VCC. So like everything city-related falls at the feet of the City Council, whether it be the purview of the City Council or not. So we had a conversation, Mr. Block, if I misquote you or if I misrepresent your good words, Renee, please let me know, where a permit is, well, somebody has an issue with VCC, maybe a violation, and they go to get a permit, that doesn't necessarily fall at VCC's feet. That is a different department. Well, that is something that I'm learning and that we discussed and that people now realize. You have a violation, VCC asks you to fix it, but they hand up the tone off to a different department. Now, that different department may hand it off to another department. So somewhere, there's a logjam. Somewhere, there is a misstep, and it may take weeks, months to get that permit, but that is not VCC's fault, and we are realizing that. And one good thing about this ordinance is that it is bringing people together. It is educating, not only myself, but I think VCC is learning a couple of things, Safety and Permits are learning a few things, just how much of a cumbersome things could be on those good actors. Not that people don't want to skirt the rules, but those who really want to build it active, who really want to get in compliance, just how this entire process from A to Z can be a bit challenging. And that's what I've also realized in this conversation, that this is a, the permitting process is not a French Quarter issue. It is a citywide issue, whether it be in Algiers, New Orleans East, uptown, Mayor's City, Lakeview. There is a process that is fundamentally broken in the city that takes somebody far too long to get a permit so they can come in compliance with whatever agency's rules they be, they may have, to allow somebody to open their doors to their business, to repair their home. So that's what I want to really focus on. I know we're here for the French Quarter, but this is a much bigger issue than a French Quarter, and it is not VCC's problem alone to fix. It's not the administration problem alone to fix. It's not the council. It's not your problem. It's a collective problem that we all need to fix, because as a councilman for this, for the city, I'm often reminded by, whether it be a small-time contractor or a big-time, high-rise owner, that it is hard to do business in a city, and people prefer to go sometimes to a different parish, to a different city, because they can get things done a lot quicker. Not skirt the rules, just get things done, just get things done a lot quicker. That's what I'm focused on. I want to be a part of the solution and not the problem. Again, this ordinance, as you see it, that's being passed around, is, you may as well rip it up. It's not going to go forward on Friday. We're going to fine-tune it. We're going to have Ms. Erin Holmes and I committed to better open lines communication. We're going to have more stakeholders at the table, and we really want, I really want, I want to make this very clear, I want to make sure the mics hear me. Thank you. I do not want to gut VCC. I don't want to stop VCC's enforcement. I want to give them more tools to put in their toolbox, to increase enforcement, to find those truly bad actors. I want to make sure I hear everything before I sit down, so just bear with me. I will be honest, I didn't know how I'd get to Meadows throwing that meal hand claps today, but I do appreciate the hand claps. So about the bad actors, there's an issue, and this is not a VCC issue, but we need to get rid of the shot girls on the corner who are illegally serving alcohol. We need to get rid of the people who are peddling lord knows what, whether it's weed or whether it's pills. We need to get rid of people who are selling illegally next to shops that pay a mortgage, that pay rent, that pay insurance, that follow the rules. So we need to get those bad actors out of the city, and I want to work with everybody, including NOPD, who is not here today, who's not here tonight, to do that. We had a couple sweeps about two weeks ago, but I realize consistency is the key. So we're going to encourage NOPD to have more sweeps, Captain Roberts and Detective Gethridge. I want to encourage them to have more sweeps to get those bad actors out of the French Quarter, to bring it back to where it needs to be, to where it once was, to those better days. If I think of anything else, I just ask for the mic again, but at this time, that's all I have. But I hope what I'm saying is received, and I'm not the person to put the question and answer. I hope that what I'm saying is received, and I just ask for everybody to trust what I'm saying. I don't mind speaking twice because I do the truth. With the truth, you don't have to remember. It's always going to be there. So if there's any questions, I'm an open book. I have nothing to hide, though. Last night, I should go already. So I'm going to have my seat, and I'll be here as long as need be for the Q and A session. Thank you. Yeah. He's taller than me. So, Councilman King, thank you for that. Being that I mentioned earlier that PRC has been here for 49 years, Patty Gay had an incredible and honest vision, and in her work, she demonstrated that, and she passed it off to the Executive Director Danielle Sol. And so we, Danielle Del Sol, my apologies, and so as we continue this work, I want to make sure we're clear. I know you're in lockstep with VCC. We need to be in lockstep with PRC. Because everything you've mentioned is what we stand for: architecture, neighborhoods, and culture. So we would love to see at the table to be able to work in our win, to make good, positive reflection of what we want to have. All right. I would now like to invite up Brian Block, who is Executive Director for the city's Historic District Office, to make some comments.
Thank you, and I'll be very brief. I know that we're anxious to get to the Q and A section of the evening. I think that's probably going to be the most informative. But first, I did want to thank the PRC for putting this together on such short notice. Everybody attending, this is really, really heartening and very, very helpful. And also, Councilman King, for coming and sharing these, a lot to all of us. So thank you very much. And I just want to say real briefly, you know, we've been at this for almost 100 years, the Vucrey Commission, and it's obvious that that work is vital to the economic health of the city. We're committed to it, and so we've been able to have very good conversations with Councilmember King about the importance of enforcement. It is our position, and I don't think anybody here would disagree, when we say that if we don't have the ability to enforce our regulations, then we actually, we have no work to do, because unfortunately, there are bad actors, but also people don't necessarily know how to do all of this work, and so we're here as a resource to help. Also, that being said, we also recognize that there's always room for improvement. We are having open dialogue with Councilmember King's office and his staff. If there are ways that we can tweak our protocols in order to make permitting more efficient, more effective, less onerous, then we absolutely want to make those corrections. Predictability and transparency is what we're all about. So, and I don't really have anything else I'd like to share, but thank you very much, and I'll be here for the Q and A as well, so if there's anything I can help with, let me know. Thanks.
I did want to add one thing that I forgot. So again, in the very informative and helpful conversation with Mr. Block and Ms. Renee, I learned, again, I learned a lot, and I've only done this job for a year and a half, so I'm still running, so please just bear with me on that part. So my, one of my options or, I guess, solutions was, I said, and I'm coming from the lens of a criminal defense attorney here, so I'm saying, if you're telling me that there's a shortage on a limited number of inspectors, and they have to inspect, they have to permit, and they have to adjudication, I ask, is it possible, and just, everyone hear me out and hold your comments if there may be any, is it possible to pull the inspectors from the adjudication process while they do more permitting and get the good actors, the true good actors, in compliance with what's required of them? If they could be pulled from the adjudication process and go to, be more boots on the ground and do more enforcement on the ground, because again, I'm only reiterating, I'm blue in the face, I'm not trying to stop enforcement, but I have to learn from Mr. Block and his staff that may put more of a strain on an already strained department. So my mindset was like, if you're a police officer and you see somebody speeding, you don't necessarily give them a ticket, you may give them a warning, but after our great conversations, that may not be the best case for this situation. So that was also mentioned by me. After talking, I realized that may not be the best path forward, and I want to have the best path forward for everybody. So if there's any questions about that, I just want to put that out there right there that was mentioned. We don't think that's the best way forward. I don't want to add a strain on an already strained department. So I just want to get that out there before we start the Q and A, maybe to prevent some All right. So now we will move to, oh, hands up. Can I get it out? We'll move to Q and A, and I want us to consider this a think-tank session, more than an attack session, and for us to work collaboratively as we think through this. All right? What am I doing? I'm bringing you the mic?
No. Folks are going to need to come and talk in these mics so that the media, as well as the PRC, can capture the audio for all of our purposes. So if you have a question, can we go to the mic? We have a couple set up.
Okay, cool. I'll let this gentleman go, and then, can I see those hands again, please?
Is there a mic here?
Yeah, these two mics. You just want to talk right into them.
Okay.
How important
Loud and clear into those two little mics.
Double four, head flat, and they will come back around.
Does this amplify the sound in the room?
No, that's for media, as well as the live stream, so that they can
Okay. So I should just speak up?
Yeah, speak up and speak directly into this.
All right. Does everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name's Daniel Hammer. I'm the President and CEO of the Historic New Orleans Collection, and of course, we are an organization that is all about preservation in many ways, or is at the root of what we do. But I'd like to say a few words tonight as a person who operates a business in the French Quarter. Indeed, the collection's one of the French Quarter's largest businesses. We have a multimillion-dollar payroll. We employ nearly 150 people. We operate 14 buildings in the French Quarter. We recently completed in 2019 a $38 million, 38,000-square-foot construction project. We have another equally large construction project, renovation of our original buildings, that we're in the early stages of planning and will be executing in the coming years. And so, you know, the collection has in front of the Vucrey Commission, I would say, probably as much business as anybody else has over the years and will into the future, and we deal with challenges. You know, I won't tell you that it's always easy. It can be difficult to be in compliance, for us, as with everybody. But I would also say that we recognize the value of what the Vucrey Commission is there to preserve, above all else, in terms of making it meaningful and possible for us to do what we do, and that is to bring 150 New Orleanians from all diverse backgrounds in our city into the French Quarter to work every day, and it is to bring hundreds of thousands of people every year into the French Quarter to engage with our history and our culture in ways that pay dividends to our local population year over year. And in fact, you know, going forward strategically, our whole mission is based around the idea of doing that more and more, in creating of the French Quarter even more than it ever has been before, something that pays positive dividends for all the people of New Orleans, both in terms of who it employs and who it both in terms of who it employs and who it engages. And so the Commission's efforts to enforce its regulations are a benefit to that. We see it as complementary to what we do.
Daniel, I love you.
And I would encourage, I would encourage helping them to enforce it rather than limiting their power. And the really important thing is, we need to recognize what are the most significant barriers to our future success in the Quarter. And there are serious quality of life issues, sanitation, public safety, accessibility that really challenge our ability to use the French Quarter to its fullest potential. And we need to be thinking of all these things together.
Daniel, I need you to, was that, you're done? This lady was number two. I'm sorry, right here. She's next.
And I think you will appreciate my question. I think it will do something. So I'm Gwen G.G. Carter. I'm just a regular citizen, but I have a long history in this city involved in history, music, culture, starting from before the 1984 World's Fair, was involved in getting that, the first Essence Music Festival. And I won't go on, but that's just general. So I am not clear, and of course, I have an interest in preserving the music, history, and culture of this wonderful city. And so I am not clear respectfully, Councilwoman, what is your original impetus? What is the reason that you thought presenting this kind of an ordinance to restrict the View Corre's, yeah, over being sure that this treasure, the goose that laid the golden egg from years and years and years, what made you think that presenting this would make it better? Because we all want it to be better, and that's why we're here. But until we understand why you would even have the thought to bring something like that is not clear to me. And that's why I'm here. Okay, thank you.
Well, the impetus, what made me do this is I received calls from, had conversations, I received calls, had conversations with residents as well as business owners who stated that it is increasingly difficult to move forward and get permitted and do business and repair homes in the French Quarter. So that was my reason because you're right, this is the goose that lays the golden egg. So I don't want to keep business standing still. And I've had, people gave very specific details of, we got to wait three months to, and this is what we always, we've always heard in our meetings, I have to wait three months, three to four months to move my balcony up a couple inches. And until I do that, then I can't open my doors, I'm losing business. I've heard people say, well, I need to, whatever on my house was cited for not being properly there, and I didn't really understand it was there, and it's costing me money, costing me time. So that's why, that was the reason for that. It wasn't anything more, anything less. But as I stated earlier, I do realize that that logjam is not the responsibility or the fault of VCC. It's a larger process. So I guess to put it in a nutshell, all I was trying to simply do was to streamline the enforcement process. And the reason I did it was, I've been hearing from, again, businesses and residents that it's extremely difficult to navigate that process, and it takes too much time, and it's just, it's difficult. So that's where I started. Thank you, Councilman.
It's okay.
Get me a good guy. Next.
Hi, my name's Sean Maddox. I live in the Quarter. I have for many years. I've run a business there for many years, and now I have my own business in the Quarter as well. So I have a significant vested interest in preserving the golden calf or the goose that lays the golden egg. Ironically, having just recently opened my own business there, throughout the process of getting the business open, the VCC was the one group that moved quickly. I was, what I found personally was that, and what I believe, is that the Safety and Permits Office has been understaffed since the collapse of the Hard Rock Hotel, which had never should have been up to begin with. That was protected and was supposed to be a protected neighborhood. And it went up, and through faults of the administration, it collapsed. And it is the Safety and Permitting Office that's understaffed. I don't know about the VCC, they did a great job with me. The Safety and Permitting Office did a good job with me as well, but that was where the holdup mostly was. And I'm not talking about the Safety and Permitting Office right now when I say this next line, but much of the trouble that we run into in the Quarter is because of corruption. I would suggest that the VCC is the one group that has our interests in mind. They're the most cohesive, coherent group that protects the businesses and the residents. They have little to gain if they're not protecting us. We are what they work for. And unlike the rest of the city administration and employees, they don't have a lot to gain if they don't take care of us. So I think that removing power from them in any way, and you know, they could be a pain in my rear end at any moment, but nevertheless, removing any power from them and shifting it to another city department would be a nightmare. The city is already not doing its job in the Quarter. Those parts of the Quarter that the city is, those functions that the city is responsible within the Quarter have already not been working for years. So it's just, I would like to see a little bit less talk about removing functions from the VCC and perhaps a little more talk about how you get people to do what they're supposed to be doing already within the Quarter from the administration.
All right, you're up.
Thank you. I'm her husband, the Executive Director of the VCC Foundation. I'm a member of our community. It's our mission to support and curb the constitutional charge of the VCC, which is to protect and value the historic architectural heritage of the New Orleans French Quarter. Our collective focus is the built environment, the architecture of this amazing neighborhood. I work very, very closely with the VCC pretty much every single day. They work so hard constantly. They do so much with so little. There's just four of them, and their deputy director and Brian are running around their best trying to support them in all ways. We all know that the city budgets tend to be relatively small, which limits resources and capacities. My organization exists because the French Quarter business owners and residents in the 80s, the 90s, and then just after Katrina came together to find a way to provide resources and support. Our projects, like the Baywater, the Baywater, helps of all ideas that came. They want to be able to issue permits faster. They want the buildings to be in good condition. They want businesses and residents alike to thrive. That's the goal they're working towards. They want to help each and every property owner individually. So thank you for saying today that you want to give them the resources that they need to better serve our community because I think that's truly our path forward.
My name is Mark Gonzalez. I live in the Baywater, but I have property with three rental units in the French Quarter. And first of all, I wanted to say, Councilmember King, you have been a breath of fresh air for us. We were very worried. And you have been really, really very responsive to the, and we're a few hearts and I thank you. Tonight, you have mentioned permitting several times and kind of touched on enforcement. I want to emphasize that enforcement is not just the flip side. It is completely connected with this whole idea of what you're trying to do. If you don't have enforcement, why is anybody going to bother getting a permit? So rather than looking towards the View Corre Commission, towards changing things to assist the city in improving its economy, I urge you to turn around and look at the city administration and get them to be doing what they need to be doing. I know it's a totally different, it's not your job to do that. But I want to encourage you to say, look, I came to this meeting and everybody was talking, they were even mentioning and clapping to the fact that there's corruption in the Sea of New Orleans. And I've been at loggerheads with the View Corre on issues and never once a scintilla of, you help me out and I'll help you. No. It's a completely, completely out of order situation. Thank you very much.
The PRC and everybody for being here. I just have a simple question. How many members of the VCC live in the French Quarter? Because right after Katrina, my husband was on the VCC, and they needed help. And we canvassed the entire French Quarter, 76 blocks, for trash cans, for whatever was neat, stop signs, whatever was needed. So I just wonder, how many members of the VCC are from the French Quarter?
I'll answer that for you. Hey, my name's Renee Bergborn. I'm the Deputy Director of the VCC. I'm one of the staff members. I am the only one that lives in the French Quarter. However, our director does the right across estimate on Bergen, in America. But I was out there after Ida, I was pounding the pavement, pavement, doing all those things. I just want to thank all of you for coming out. Thanks.
Since you're up.
Uh huh.
I want to ask a question. In regards to what Freddie says, Councilmember King, sorry, what Councilmember King says on items and two local challenges in press. Where are you guys aligned? I'm sorry? Speak up, please, we can't hear you. Where are you guys aligned in regards to opportunities and any change or any opportunity that exists right now based on what you heard today, what you guys have spoken about in the past? Where are you guys aligned?
I would say we've had three meetings with Councilmember King's office. I think today was the first time that I really felt like we got on the same page. We're going to make some progress. Open dialogue, talking about things that work, things that don't work. A lot of people don't necessarily understand how our office works, how to put in a permit, why can't I do this, why can't someone else do that? So it's education. We're all sort of teaching each other and learning and talking about it. And I think we got a lot of that today. And I think we are moving forward. So I hope that answers the question. I'm sorry. Hopefully, looking maybe at streamlining the permitting process a little bit more, making that move a little smoother. I know there are some pickups here and there, but we are again a very small staff. Most of you are very patient with us. I know I've been to a lot of people's homes and helped people with certain things. So I think permitting process.
One, one final item. And the whole thing that Councilmember King asked to be added that we've been talking about in our series of meetings is retooling our notice of violations so that when you get a notice of violation, you know what you're going to do. It'll be very specific, so you'll know exactly what the issue is, you know exactly where under building. So there's no question, when you get the notice of violation, what we're talking about. Of course, we encourage everybody to do the job to us, we can let go of that. But that was a great opportunity for us to find common ground and learn a way we could all, you know, make our processes more functional.
Sidebar conversation.
Yes. I think the question was also how many commissioners. Currently, none of them is in. I think that would be a good thing also.
And it is required that, one, which quarter, I believe we do have a empty spot right now.
So how long is it?
So everyone, put in your applications.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ivana Dillis. I'm a local attorney. I represent Louisiana physicians and hospitals. I've been living in New Orleans for almost 10 years. I moved here when I was 21 years old. I've recently lived in the French Quarter on Charter Street, and I just bought my first house in the Tour Eau Boulone. I have a pretty large following on social media. And what I have found through that is that first and foremost, the French Quarter is a community. And one of the things that disturbed me so far this evening is hearing it often referred to as a golden goose or a solely an economic vessel. It is not. It is a place where families raise their children, where artists grow their crafts. It is the heart of our city because it's our community. And as an attorney, I have noticed that typically when one removes regulation, it is not those small businesses that succeed. It is international LLCs hid behind masks of money and power. And those are the people that will end up owning in the Quarter. Not a cute young business owner from Algiers or, you know, just to use as an example. So what I worry about and what I have yet to hear nor see in this plan is these bad apples you speak of removing, how does not removing regulations contribute to that problem? And I think that's something that we're all concerned about. Quick example, while I lived on Charter Street, it was not the small businesses that refused to upkeep. It was Willie's Chicken Shack on Charter Street. As I lived and breathed in the Quarter until December 1st, 2022, when their balcony was close to collapsing on citizens walking by, they just simply closed up shop. And why? Because they have the money and resources to hide behind LLCs and do so. A normal small business owner wouldn't. They would face the music and do what's right. So I hope you do what's right for us. Thank you so much.
I hope you don't own the chicken shack. I've actually never been to any Willie's Chicken Shack in the entire city. But thank you for highlighting that the French Quarter is a neighborhood. That's often lost in a conversation, that's often lost in the, how people view the French Quarter. And I got a firsthand look at the neighborhood part of the French Quarter when there was talk about closing the Plessy School. And I toured the school with the principal. I made a commitment with the administration of the Plessy School and their leadership to do whatever I can because, to keep it open, because I got the emails and the phone calls. I said, I work in the French Quarter, I live in the French Quarter, and my child goes to that school. So when I go to work, I can walk my child to school, or he and she can walk back and forth. So that is not lost on me. I do realize that the French Quarter is a residential neighborhood as well as a commercial neighborhood. That's why I want to open this can of worms. Mr. Alan Johnston, please don't say anything. Just, I got to pick which out. That's why we didn't touch the residential STRs in the French Quarter because we realized that it is a different place. We realized that it is a different place. And so we realized that, and that is not lost on me. So I want you to know that.
My name is Larry Hestorfer. I'm not a resident of the View Corre, but I was employed by the city for 35 years and for almost two decades worked for the View Corre Commission. I appreciated so much hearing my old friend Sunny Shields turn to some of the history of the neighborhood because I think it's critical that none of us lose sight that not only is it a commercial area, not only is it a commercial area, it is a tourist enhancement, that it's a residential area, it is a microcosm of the city of New Orleans, because it is the original city. What perturbs me so much is that, and reflecting on what you said, Councilman King, that you've received so many concerned comments about people alleviating problems in the permitting process. My experience, being an employee at the Vucurei Commission, from the building inspector, to the plans examiner, to the assistant director, and to the director for 13 years, was that with all of the guidelines, and all of the regulations, and all of the historic information that has been compiled over years, and professional analysis, and development of best practices, the easiest way for anyone to get a permit is to follow the regulations. I can't count, because I can't remember that well, the number any longer, but I can't remember, I count the number of times that I may have appeared in front of the council to defend guidelines that were there for people to aid them in the process, to simplify the effort that is needed to undertake a rehabilitation, or renovation, or restoration project, but people who chose to ignore them, sometimes ignore them so completely that it was as if they never knew there was a rule to begin with, especially when they did the work ahead of time. But those people, and there were many, 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 the vast majority of people who received thousands of permits, knew what the process was, maybe they didn't know every aspect of it, but you had staff people to assist. It's a question and answer process for everything we do in life. But I think it's also important to look at the history of this and say, in 1975, when I first went to work for the Vucurei Commission, we had 12 employees. The pressures on the Quarter have probably only increased in the past five decades. So, I think, knowing that budget time is nigh upon us, and I know the process only too well, of going in and asking again, and again, and again, for additional staff to help the needs of the residents and the business owners, only to find that there are always many other, more pressing matters, that mean that that famous goose that laid the golden egg can get very tarnished, or perhaps a few eggs may be stolen. So, I think that it's really critical that we think about, where do our priorities lie if this is such an economic benefit, not only to people in the Quarter, or to the city of New Orleans, but to the entire state of Louisiana? And I would argue to the United States that we ought to think more carefully about increasing the budget to allow the permitting process to go through more smoothly, and for those people who are doing the right thing by the Quarter to benefit. And I would expect that everyone else will benefit as well. Thank you.
Councilmember King, we're very relieved to hear that you want to, we're hoping to pull this back completely, not just tweak it, because the tweaking word kind of bothers us a little bit. Is it starting from scratch? And I'd also like to know a little bit about the process. I'm Sandra Stokes with the Louisiana Landmark Society. We too would like a seat at the table in helping to draft this, and we would like to know that there's a public process that will be happening as we move forward.
Very brief comment, my name is David Feldman. My wife and I came here for a week, eight years ago. Sir, you have 60 words in here that could destroy the French Quarter, and I certainly hope you'll take the time to consider that. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you all for being here. You know, New Orleans is, hello. New Orleans is made up of 73 neighborhoods, 20 of them, you know, are protected and historic. And we're a city of entrepreneurs, and we support each other, because frankly, we don't have really any other industry here besides tourism. So, I just sort of want to hit home on, you do have the opportunity with the budget hearings coming up, to actually increase the budget for safety and permits for enforcement. I know that we had 12 new enforcement officers that were onboarded at the end of the year. When I sit in all of the public hearings, it is enforcement over and over and over. And so, I just really want us to think about, how do you actually increase that budget, but also pay a livable wage for those individuals? New Orleans is getting very expensive to live in, and at city planning, I know that we've had lots of openings for people, but we're not getting them because we're losing them to other cities, because actually the pay is not allowing them to actually work at City Hall. And the dedicated employees at City Hall are just incredible, and I just, I really want you to sort of think about that at hitting home, and I thank everyone for being here this evening.
That's it? All right, all right, all right. I got you, I got you. Come on up, sir. Now, we'll have Nathan Chapman, Board President of VCPURA, to give us some final remarks and thoughts. Mr. Chapman?
Thank you so much. The Vucurei Property Owners, Residents and Associates is the second largest, excuse me, the second oldest historic preservation organization in the entire country. Contrary to rumor, I was not there at the beginning, but I have been doing this a very long time. And I just, what a special night this has been, you know? I want to thank all of you. You know, when the house museums come rushing to save the French Quarter, this doesn't happen every day. So, I want to thank all of the organizations that helped make this come together. I want to thank our hosts, the PRC. I want to especially thank you, Freddie. You know, this was probably not your favorite thing that you wanted to do, but you really rose to the occasion, and we're so happy you were here, and you spoke from the heart to us. I think that was very important, so thank you for coming on. I'd like to ask two things in my questions. You know, absolutely, I hear people say, hey, it takes too long to get the permits, so I don't want to lose sight. One way we could get things faster is to create more funding for the Vucurei Commission. Would that be something that you could also do, is help get them more funding, so they can have more staff, and we can do all of this with the same quality?
I, well, when the budget process comes, the different departments, they submit a budget, and it's reviewed by the entire council, so that would be no different. But I will say, much like NOPD, much like sanitation, different departments, the money is there, but there always isn't somebody to fill those positions. I'm not making excuses why, but it's, so, it's not so much that the money is not there, sometimes there just isn't a want to do the job, for whatever reason. But I'm open to open the, have the conversation about, with any department, not just VCC, safety and permits, whatever it may be, about additional funding, but again, the manpower needs to be there.
The other thing, you know, so, you can tell people are worried, you know, from the heart. Would it be possible, instead of just saying we're deferring the ordinance, could you withdraw it? And we promise, we're going to work with you.
So, Mr. Chapman, I don't want to speak and speak too soon. I don't want to speak and speak too soon, but I will get with you tomorrow, and you can let everybody know. Let me talk to my staff. I don't want to, I'm not a liar. Again, if I tell you one thing, it's going to say, I'm going to do the same thing every time. So, let me talk about it, see what's, I'll get with you tomorrow on that.
All right, well, everybody, stay engaged, stay tuned, you know, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you, Councilman.
One more thing before we go, I guess, so, so one more thing, I guess everybody leaving. I'm a, all right. So, I'm a, like I said before, I'm an open book, I have nothing to hide, I have nothing, no reason not to tell the truth. Anyone can call me, I made several phone calls this weekend, I don't shy from any responsibility, I don't duck and run away. So, if there's any questions about any policies that I make regarding anything in this city, not just VCC, but in Algiers Point, throughout District C, please call me. I want to be an accessible council member, I want to be somebody that's accessible, and that you can trust, and I have not said anything since my year and a half in taking over District C, District C, that I didn't back up. So, if you have a question about anything, please, call my office, send me an email, and we can have a conversation, an open honest conversation. This concludes the evening.